Okay, I've got the can on, got the abstract of votes, and then also the certificate of election here for Justin Wright. There were seven provisional ballots that we received on Election Day. All seven of those were rejected because all seven of the people that voted provisional had already submitted a ballot through the absentee process. They had just, since it had been about three months before, they had forgotten that they had done it. And then we've had 14 ballots that came in after Election Day, of which 13 of those were accepted. One of them was rejected because it had a late postmark on it. The other ones were all on time or had a July 6 postmark, so.
New certificate for signing.
What did turnout come to as a final number?
Total turnout was 9,122. Of those, just a little bit over 8,200 of them were absentee.
So about 900 people showed up on Election.
Yep.
So what does that mean? More than 90% absentee voted?
Um, I didn't look at the percentage on there for sure, but...
But the turnout was high for a special.
Yeah, this was, in my short nine years here, that's the highest turnout we've ever had for a special election.
Yes, sir. The final vote tallies?
For Wright. What's that?
Could you read out the final vote tally? What does that throw me?
Oh, okay.
So is that the 48, 48, and 42, 40?
42, 40 for Jim Cassina, and 40...
8, 48.
48, 48 for Justin.
48, 48, 42, 40.
Yes, thank you.
Certificate of election says Justin Wright was elected to the office of County Board of Supervisors, District 2, for the residue of the term ending December 31st, 2022. Signing as the President of the Board of Canvassers. Let's go back to you. Any questions from board members or comments additionally from your office?
No. That's all, just...
Then I will move to receive.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes 4-0 for the last time.
Thank you.
Thank you. The board is now in recess until 4:30. Continue to sign these sheets of paper.
We don't buy them anymore. Yeah, we don't buy them unless somebody like says specifically, "No, I really, really want this," you know? Because that one year we bought them for everybody and then, yeah, we were like you. Did you pause it? What's your screen set? It's on a little box thing. Yeah, it's just streaming right now. It's still going.
The next day.
Yeah. That was just a couple weeks ago, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
He was pretty good about...
It was like a dim stream, like a dim stream.
It was, it was my fault. I do remember what happened that day before. Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. Something happened, freaked out, right? So he stopped it, and I started it. He stopped it, and I started it. Yeah, but it like knew that nothing was happening somehow, or I'm not sure at all. I fixed it the next morning. I think he called Tracy. Just calling in for meetings. Yep.
Hello, everyone. It's 4:30. I'd like to invite Josh and our new supervisor to be sworn in.
Just stand right here. Send that way to use our microphone. Raise your right hand. Do you, Justin D. Wright, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of County Board of Supervisors in Woodbury County as now or hereafter required by law? So say aye do.
I do.
Could you get a signature? A signature. Thank you. Congratulations.
Remember the last time anybody will clap for you?
Huh? That could be. That could be. The kids have already stopped clapping, so we'll do this again.
You guys hear one here as well?
Yeah, so my wife Laura is with me today, and I'm excited to get started with this role. It's been a very enjoyable process for the last several months, and I'm already really enjoying the work. I've got some constituents already, and some of the directors of departments, and really, really enjoying the role so far, and I've been looking forward to really getting into this.
Please go on back and find a seat. You've got to get started. Microphone is your key to millions of viewers on YouTube, watching live from the camera behind you, which will have a clear shot in the back of your head. Camera over there.
That would be a colossal percent increase, I think. Mine's better.
If you don't like that seat next week, you can sit over here. It depends on the weather. All right. If you call for me in order, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. You can be seated. If there's any silence or cell phones, keep that down.
The first item on our agenda is citizen concerns. If anyone here is like to speak on an item not already addressed on the agenda. There is also a call-in number for those participating by phone, which is 712-224-6014. Indy, is there anyone on the line?
We have one caller, but I believe he's calling for an agenda.
Very well. We'll move ahead to item number two, which is approval of the agenda. I'll second the motion by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes 5-0. Items three through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the July 7th meeting. And Mr. Wright, you may wish to abstain if you weren't here. You may note that, it's up to you. Item four is approval of the claims. Item five from the county treasurer includes A) approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Woodbury-Minona Drainage District Number Two; B) approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Lake Forest MHC LLC; and C) approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials M-H. Item six from the Board of Supervisors is to receive the Articles of Agreement for Western Iowa Workforce Development Region. Mr. Radek mentioned this in a previous week. You have anything else to add? It's been signed by all the counties.
It's mostly just, it's been around to all the counties within the workforce development region, and we're moving on to now just receiving that in for the record.
Very good. And item seven from Human Resources includes A) approval of memorandum of personnel transactions; B) the authorization to initiate the hiring process; and C) approval of the purchase of cyber liability insurance for FY '21. Anything to add on that, Melissa?
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director. I do believe this is the fourth or fifth year that we've purchased this insurance, and as time goes on, the liability also becomes larger, so the price, the premium has gone up slightly over the past few years. I do believe the nice thing about this policy is if by chance we were held for ransom, this would pay for all the investigation and the insurance cost, or the attorney costs, to find out who was holding our data for ransom. So I think this is a very good purchase.
Good. Appreciate it. Any questions or concerns on the consent agenda? I'll second the motion by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes 5-0. Item eight from the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Potabom, for action is approval to replace the existing quality assurance questionnaire.
It's something we've been talking about for a while, since we changed to be in compliance with the state law with, it only go into the successful bidder. The one thing that is different on this from our prior one is we did make the threshold 300,000 instead of the 135,000 that it had been. So it's any bid of 300,000 or greater has to do this questionnaire. Below that, well, Kenny will come up with some way to judge for smaller contracts, rather than put everybody through the same thing. Plus, this one does do a little better job, I believe, of addressing the subcontractors, which is where a lot of your problems with not paying workers' comp, not paying all the appropriate taxes that all comes in.
We'd had previous discussion on the limit up to $1 million. Could you just explain the rationale behind 300,000?
Can't blame that on Mr. DeWitt. Actually, we were having discussion, and I thought a million, and Rocky said he thought that might be a little high for what we do, so we kind of came to the 300,000 instead of raising it higher.
That 135,000, I thought was kind of low, a little bit on the rest of that, almost a trivial number compared to some of the size of the projects. I think Marty and I, like you said, we kind of came to the conclusion of 300,000. We talked about 300,000 to 500,000, but I think that 300,000 is probably higher than that at the time being, if we see the need to raise that, that we should look at it.
So in the past, I, you know, I was thinking like 1.2 million, kind of around the bonding threshold, and we were talking a million. I still think it probably should be higher than 300. You know, 500, 800 maybe more appropriate.
Well, that was, like I said, it's no magic in that number, that we just, actually, like I said, I was, I started at a million and...
Well, I think that, I think the gist of it is we're much happier with this finalized version of the questionnaire, so I think that's the big issue here and not the dollar amount.
And we can change the threshold at almost any time with a simple vote, so...
Kenny, do you have a recommendation on the threshold, or...
Kenny, Building Services Director. I guess a happy median between the 1.2 and the 300 might be 500, or I think is probably adequate.
Would you like to speak, sir?
Yeah, please. Thank you. Perryville, 4526 Perry Way. I kind of agree with the $300,000 mark. I thought at first we were looking at the 1.2, and we talked about the 500, but then we have a lot of these jobs that come in at the 800, 900,000 range, so I think it is a good idea to lower that. I would be willing to accept the 500,000. It's just, I'll tell you what, this language really assures that taxpayers' dollars are being spent accordingly, and this is a, it's really part of the history-making process here.
And you might want to stay up there, because I'm going to ask a few more questions, and I'm trying to get the sheet to load back up. I have notes that I wrote down. So like question six, I can't get the thing to load here right now. It's just circling.
Six is list construction projects in excess?
That they currently have in progress.
I just don't know if that's really something that should concern us so much as far as whether or not they're qualified, is whether or not they're doing other projects. My personal opinion.
So what is the question?
I'm just saying, is question six necessary to have on there?
And the reason I left it, that it's in there, is simply because I didn't want to get a contractor bidding that's got three or four jobs of that size going on at the same time, because that opens them up to more subcontractors getting the work that might not be as, I hate to say legal, but as upfront and transparent as we'd want.
But again, they're required to give us the subs and everything else. I mean, that, to me, doesn't make it necessary to ask.
I've always heard I'd rather have too much information than not enough.
Sure.
And that's the reason I wanted it in there, was simply so we know what they're doing of equal or greater value.
May I ask a historical question on this whole process? So a few weeks ago, when I was gone and Mr. Radek brought up his version of the questionnaire, it was mentioned that it was kind of the same latest draft you're working on with billing services. His has three pages, yours has six, quite a few more questions. Was that after talking to more entities? What was the, you know, because we had the discussion about subcontractors being held to the same standard? That was addressed, and I remember you had concerns that it wasn't addressed strictly enough. Now it's, you know, two questions, I think it could be one single question, but it's two, you know, could you just, you know, explain that process?
Yeah, and when Kenny and I met, one of the ideas when he came up with the original hybrid was to lower the questions, and I talked to several people, one an attorney, who looked at it, and they said they were fearful, as I was, that making the, including six or seven questions in one question would make it a lot easier for a contractor to say, "Yeah, I've got all those," and maybe missing one of them. Because there were some questions in there where it says, "Have you followed all the rules on?" And then it would list a whole bunch of them. We still have a couple in here like that, but I think they're less confusing. And the people I talked to said they would rather answer more questions than have long-drawn-out paragraphs instead of a question. And that's why we kind of slid into more questions, but they're much simpler to answer.
Yeah, really help to clarify the questions.
I would agree that my run-on questions are probably not as easy to answer as most of the questions on here.
And like I said, my fear was that if you have seven or eight items in a question is, they might have one of them that they're not in compliance with, but they'll check yes, because they are most of them.
Sure. And I just feel like maybe we're asking too many things, so...
And the good idea is this only goes to the successful bidder. In the past, when they went to all the bidders, I would have agreed with you, because then, because you put out too much stuff.
I don't think we're asking too many questions and guarding the taxpayers' dollars.
Yeah.
So I think this is a far more complete and substantial questionnaire than we've ever had, so...
Next note I have is on question eight, requiring a resume for each, what was it? Project manager, superintendent, other key personnel.
Resume and/or recent work history.
Right.
I doubt they're going to give us their resumes. My bet is they're going to list several jobs they've done.
Right. But now, who identifies key personnel? Is that up to the contractor?
Yeah.
Is that up to us?
No, that's, that would be the contractor identifying, because we have a spot where he has to tell us who's going to be the officer in charge, project manager, superintendent, and this just lets us know who they are and what they've done.
The question seven, question 10 seem like the same question. Maybe asked slightly different.
Seven and 10?
Question seven, question 10.
Well, that 10 is about that you've completed your projects and completed them on time. And seven is about project manager, architect, contract amount.
List major project contractor has completed in the last three years. On a separate sheet, list contractor's last five completed projects.
But again, the first one is, and name the project owner, the project manager, officer in charge, and all that, and 10 it's completed dates and for each scheduled completion date and any approved extensions. That's a timing thing, and seven is a people thing. So yeah, they start outside on the like, but then you see where they move, because one is about timing and one's about personnel.
Might I add also, excuse me, I have shown this to several contractors, local contractors, and have gotten their approval as well.
Okay.
There's some places where the questionnaires are 50, 60 questions.
Sure.
Really gets monotonous. This is proven, tested language that, what we need.
Is it a template from a larger group? Based on a template from a larger group?
Yes.
And that is?
From a larger group, meaning...
Where did you get the template?
A group of...
Polk County.
Polk County?
Yes. City of Des Moines, both, same language.
Okay, so they share the same...
Yes.
Theirs is for projects of 5 million or greater and...
Yes.
But yet...
Lot larger area.
So on question 13, is it really a good question to ask if they've been, who they've been bonded by in the last five years, as long as they're bonded for our project?
You know, if you've got, if you have several bonding agents, I don't think that's probably a good thing.
The one guy I showed this to, and I specifically asked that to...
They'll usually use the same over and over again.
Because that's what one contractor told me, he said, if you have somebody bidding, and they've used several bonding companies, either they have a problem, or they're just not showing everything.
Question 14, could we add, in the last five years, contractor ever declared bankruptcy or been in receivership? When it makes, I mean, you go back in perpetuity or whatever, that's kind of...
Bankruptcy or receivership's a pretty big thing, so, even if they filed bankruptcy eight years ago.
People do that for divorce or other reasons, too. I mean, there's...
But these aren't individuals, this is a...
Was this question on your questionnaire, Keith?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think I had the last five years on mine.
I didn't think so, but he, again, that's, that's not the same as a person, but for, if you've got somebody who's gonna be the general contractor on a major contract, I'd like to know if they've ever filed bankruptcy or been in receivership. And again, the, one of the contractors that I talked to about this, then, I was a little worried about the length, and he, similar to what, he, he said, he said that, you know, 50, 60 questions is unusual, he says, and remember, once we've done one...
Just ask a question.
I know, but he said, once we've done one, it's, it's kind of all there, you just change a few dates, add anything in between, and you go from there.
Just to add on to that, you know, if, if a contractor has gone bankrupt and they answer the question truthfully, it's, it's your decision ultimately to accept or deny that questionnaire.
Sure.
So...
True.
Just because they answer yes...
Doesn't mean they're disqualified.
Yeah.
Sure. Question 22, is 14 days long enough from, let's see, when we say, within 14 days of notification to the apparent lowest bidder? Is that, I mean, I, I, we don't have a whole lot of projects that start immediately. Oh, and maybe you could answer to that.
Excuse me, if you, if you don't put a timeline on it of some time?
Sure, and I'm just saying 20 or 30, or...
Most of the bids on most of the projects are only good for 30 days.
Okay.
So, if you're gonna throw somebody out and say you can't, your bid's not good because of these reasons, you want at least time to bring that next person in, because then they've gotta call up the questionnaire and do all these things again, you wanna get it in while you still have somebody else to pick.
Okay. And then, question 25. Is it necessary to ask for references if we just ask for their projects that they've completed? Are they character references? I mean, what are we asking for on this one?
Actually, that came from the template. My guess is, you're just asking for, I would say professional, I wouldn't think you'd be asking for personal references for a company.
Right.
But it'd be similar to people you've done work for, I'm sure.
Come on up to the microphone, anyone who wants to say.
Lawrence Goldberg, Goldberg Group Architects. I would ask for references, and I would make it more specific. I would say for the building related to the building type for which the bid is being submitted. This is the number-one way we can check, because with today's graphic programs and software and everything, these guys can make themselves pretty impressive until you call their references and find out how badly they've bungled some of the, or mismanaged some of the projects of a similar type. So, I would not take the teeth out of that at all, I would put some more specificity into it.
So, a key person involved in this, once it's enacted, and, and obviously, the point of contact, our Building Services Director is recommending 500,000. He'd talked about, you know, higher amounts before. Would you be willing to include that number in this? Because it's not listed, it's just on your agenda sheet, it's not actually in the document.
Well, there is one spot, because it's tied into the question where it says, number six, to list any projects in excess of that same amount.
So, would you be...
Which is in here, too.
Okay, so would you be willing to change that to...
Yeah, because I'm not tied to that number.
Okay.
That was just a discussion, and I gave way to Mr. Dewitt there.
So, not to fear becoming a run-on question, like my previous ones, but, so then on 25, would we want to say something in parentheses, like emphasis on similar projects? Well, I mean, if we're asking for references on the jail, and of course, part of the reason I think we should discuss this, you know, make sure we want it to be the way it is, I think the authority should probably pass something like this, too.
The authority has full intention to pass on that.
Yeah. The idea was, we'd do this, and then the authority would do the same one.
And that's what I was thinking all along, so...
I, I fully agree with Mr. Goldberg, that'd be good, but I'm not sure, in our case, how many of our contractors will have done jails.
Jails, yeah, yeah.
That's why, we don't do that many contracts, I'm not sure, and I like the idea of tying them to similar-type projects.
Marty, the fact is, whether they've done jail or not, there are entitlements to general contracting to bid if they meet the requirements.
You have to approach the mic, sir.
What you're asking is, whatever professional qualifications, staff and track record they're presenting as relevant, be true, accurate, and display adequate professional, technical, and, and financial management. I don't care if someone's bidding, I've had contractors do a justice project of ours all over the country that have never done one before, but because they're good, thorough, competent builders, they follow our, our documents, and it's a successful project. If they're bums, it's not gonna be.
What we're talking about is other references.
Correct.
Make it...
That's, that's why I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know, whether it's a jail or whatever it is, if they want you to consider it, it ought to be specific and thorough and complete.
Kenny?
The only, the only, and I agree with Larry, but the only downside that I see to that, maybe it's a problem, maybe it's not, but when, when you run upon a project, and I just wanna use an example of the sub-basement project we did here at the courthouse, when we put the, did the additional piling repairs that we did down there. There isn't everybody who does that kind of work. And, while we did go out and look for references on the company that did work and found out that they were an excellent contractor in doing that type of work, there wasn't a huge selection in who we were going to choose to do that. So, we were fairly limited, so that's just something to think about on the projects.
You gotta make him take the mask off, huh?
Sorry, I'll take the mask off. I was just stating that, one thing to keep in mind on all of the different, is all of the different projects that the county does. I was using an example of the sub-piling repair we did here at the basement at the courthouse. We chose a contractor to do that work, and we did check on their references, and they were a very good contractor and had good references. However, our choice, when it came to contractors to perform that work, was really very, very limited, to find somebody who actually did that work and, and did, did quality work, so. It's some, just something for the board to consider when they're talking over, thinking about different projects that we do do.
And the other thing, as long as we make sure we follow up and check the references, that's another reason for the 14 days, that gives you time to actually, you know, because a lot of places ask for references and they never check them. And I would hope that, especially on bigger projects, we'd make sure we checked all the references.
And do we normally give 30 days to accept? Is that what our process is?
I don't think we stipulated that in our contracts, unless Joshua can remember that, but typically on responses, did you mean, or reference checks, or what were you?
Responses, like, from award.
Typically, no, there is a, we typically give a, a date that the bids have to be turned in, and the bids are opened, and from there, it goes to the board to decide if they'd like to choose low bidder and approve that contract or not.
And the timing on the questionnaire kicks in once we notify them that they are the...
The low bidder.
Correct.
Or the low responsible bidder, yeah.
Right.
But like, when he was talking 30 days, he was talking about, most usually when they put in a bid, the bid's only good for 30 days.
Oh, I got you.
So, if you, if you eliminated one and had to pick another one, you're...
So, most of our AIA contracts, when you submit my bid and I give my pot, it's only good for 30 or 45 days, that's the number, because I'm only guaranteeing that price, you can't, six months from now, if you get that, that same number.
Sorry, Shane Albrook, 600 Maverick Lane.
Well, that is all the questions I had on it. I mean, obviously, it's something I wanted us to discuss in open session and come up with the best possible questions for it, but not too long, but just right, you know? So, if there's a good defense for every question I have, I think that's satisfying to me. I do think we probably should look at the 500,000 if we, do we have a motion on the table?
No.
So, I would move it, but at the $500,000 amount.
One second.
No, I'm fine with that. Like I said, the number wasn't mine, because I started at a million, and I thought that was probably a little too high, but...
So, I'll second the motion, which is to approve with question six, change from 300,000 to 500,000. Motion by Raddick. Any, any particular questions? Anyone still has particular heartburn on? Any additional questions not noted, people have, feel strongly about? Any other union groups wish to speak on behalf of this item? Going once, going twice? Any further discussion from the board? Questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes 5-0. Thank you, everyone, for your work on this. Item number nine, from the Board of Supervisors, myself, and also Board Administration Dennis Butler, includes, A, approval of conflict waiver. Now, a couple of us today met with legal counsel and with Dennis as well, and the best way to move forward on the issues concerning item nine, the issue is, we need to get someone paid. And we're in a unique situation where the county decided to partner with the city Creighton Authority. The authority must issue bonds in order to gain income, in order to pay for design of the project. That is the authority that is by code supposed to do that. There are no enumerated, if I'm butchering this, Joshua, just let me know, there are no enumerated additional authorities granted through the home rule principle to the authority that aren't stated in code, and it does not specifically mention that the authority can enter into indebtedness other than by issuing bonds. Is that correct?
You've done a good job so far.
Thank you. I'll stop talking then. So, but obviously, we need, we need to get our architect paid. So, I, at this point, I'm not sure that a 2080 agreement and the associated conflict waiver is the best way to handle this. We may want to just approve a payment from reserves and find a way to make up for that in the future. That would be the quickest and cleanest, and, and would not really have any sort of legal liability.
I guess we, we discussed, Matthew and I had discussed this as an option. We ran it with Dennis, and kind of was, you were wondering your opinion on this, the legal advice, because on the 2080 side, it does seem a little unique, because if the authority's only supposed to get revenue by way of bond, well, this clearly is not a bond. Is it just cleaner to have us pay them and then...
Well, and I guess this is the first that I've heard of this idea, so, it would probably be something we'd want to run by counsel for the authority as well. You know, we, counsel for the authority has said that they believe that there's authority to enter a 2080 agreement. Just the, the nature of the 2080 agreement, in, in my mind, it's functioning like a, like a loan note, and that's where it kind of gets into the gray area. And a lot of this is, we don't have a lot of examples elsewhere in the state for counties that have done authorities in cooperation with their county seat, so, there's not a lot of case law on it. But I, I think the, you know, we have the information from the authority's attorney that they do think it's an option, although it hasn't been tested, and we agree that the safest option would be if there was a way of waiting till the bond revenue came. That would pose an issue with, you know, we, we need to continue the work to make sure it gets done in a timely manner, so, there's kind of a lot of different forces at play. But yeah, if you were gonna do something different than the 2080 agreement, I think that we should have the discussion with the authority's attorney as well.
Would you be willing to engage in that conversation, hopefully by action next week?
Yeah, I can do that.
Well, wasn't the 2080 kind of urged by our attorney, Dennis?
Yeah, he says it's a model idea, or a tested, didn't see anything that was illegal about it, but like Joshua says, never been tested in court or anything else, and we're template really for the whole state on this whole authority and processes like this.
I guess another question I would have, I mean, is, on this bill, what part of this, is this for initial work done for the county, or is this work done for the authority? Because then, I don't know if you could answer to that, Larry?
It's for the authority.
It's for the authority?
Yes. Part of his original contract of 3 million.
There's a fair amount of site planned.
Architect for 350,000. I think so.
Nothing is ever simple with, is that not true? This bill, which is the first one for the project, encompasses three tasks. The first is, the 2080 agreement, where we participated in the formulation, finalization, negotiation of it. Number two was, the ability to look, or the opportunity to look at the 325 acres around the site that form the catchment area, the drainage, the wetlands area, draining onto the site and its implications. And the third was modifying the footprint of the project so that it corresponds to the document you now have in your hand, which... document you now have in your hand, which took what was originally 50,000 to 70,000 cubic yards of fill required to balance the site, is now down to 12,000 to 15,000 cubic yards. We think we may inch it down a little more. And what that's done is it's brought, it's done two things. One is, it's reduced the earthwork from 4 to 5 million down to under 1 to 2 million, and it's eliminated the need for that 72-inch concrete culvert entirely. And all of that are kind of 2080 kind of stuff, but the impact, the site engineering within the site that the authority has is its project locale. So, there's a lot of overlap, but a fair amount of it is 2080-related, so it can sort of go either way.
I think that's helpful information. I mean, in my mind, we could pay on another invoice if we so chose. And that wouldn't be necessarily a novel concept that, you know, even the authority's attorney doesn't explicitly say this is a tried and true, is actually quite a bit of a disclaimer at the end of his email. So, it not being listed on the agenda that way, I would think that next week, we could find a way to make that happen.
Joshua, again, worked out with the bond council, our bond council, all their offer, we could include the claim, if he has the okay, include the claim in your claims next week for approval to get paid.
Right. Either that, or we'll just put this right back on the agenda, the way it is.
Right, I think it would be good to give us a little bit of time to look at that, and then, yeah, we either come back probably with something similar to this, or if it's going to be run through as a claim, that could potentially be done next week, along with other claims.
And is there consensus, this would be a one-time solution, it wouldn't keep coming back in the claims, because, you know, the authority is the authority?
Is there anything else we're going to have to do before they start their issuing the bonds?
It's going to take anywhere a minimum of one month, two months, once the lease is approved. Until lease approved, after that's approved, they can go get the S and P, it takes about two weeks, and close the bonds could be a month, two months, including two weeks.
But I'm just saying, other than this, is there any other big item that's going to come up that will have to be paid before then?
That, we have to, if this will cover for the next two months.
Already, good question. I need some additional geotechnical information, we need some additional hydrostatic information, we need some questions about the previous survey, which has not ever been perfected, it must be perfected, and so, these aren't huge amounts, but they're 5,000 here and 12,000 there, and so, yes, there's some things we would ask the authority to allow us to do or initiate over the, you know, guys, if we think about it, we've got to get this thing moving, and I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but it's just, I hate to see something delay us moving this thing forward finally.
I think it is important that, you know, we've gone this route of setting up the authority, and the authority is a distinct entity from the county, and we do need to respect that as much as we can, and I think so too, the question as far as it's a one-time thing, or, you know, where there'll be more requests. It does better respecting the distinct legal status of the authority if we, you know, if it is a one-time thing that basically gets them through to the bond, so, you know, if there's a different amount than what the 330 is, or the 350 is, you know, if we could have that by next week, I think it would be-
So my understanding is that was sort of what we projected the cost to be up to that amount until the authority was able to pay. It's not currently at that amount, but the point is, you know, should be well taken. If there's something over the next couple of weeks, we have a more updated invoice to pay on, that'd be fine.
Look, after our discussion now, it does feel like maybe we should go the route we had it, because essentially Larry is doing the work for the authority, the authority should pay that bill, and then we're entering into the 2080 to help the authority pay that bill, essentially. So, I don't know.
And we did have a dollar, no, 350 on that, on max, up two.
Which seemed fine. I'm not arguing with the amount, Joshua. My question, and I guess the question I've had for several weeks, is, is there something in Iowa statutes that, I mean, I've done this in 26 to 28 states across the country, and if the county or city boards have had the reserves to do so, they've been able to pass a borrowing resolution, loan the money to the 6320 corp, or the industrial authority, or the jail authority, or whatever authority, with the understanding that when bond proceeds were available in 30 to 90 days, whatever, it would get paid back plus interest, what little interest there is. I still don't understand why you can't do that.
Well, Jason, the authority's attorney, would be more of an expert on it than I am, but I think it boils down to, the authority doesn't have home rule authority, in other words, they can only do, they only have the powers that are enumerated in the statute.
Right.
And my understanding of the statute that authorizes the authority, when it comes to debt, the only reference for debt is in regards to issuing bonds. So the argument is that they're not able to secure, you know, a loan or debt in a different manner.
That's why they can't do an interim loan like a bond anticipation note.
Again, I defer to Jason on that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, I wish you could say you've been in this situation several times before, but none of us have, really.
Okay.
Well, per Mr. Woodman's recommendation, and the chairman and vice chairman's suggestion, we steer from the 2080. I understand that our bonding attorney recommended the 2080, and I'm really struggling to justify putting it off for another week, because we still have that LEC that's falling apart around our ears over there, and, I mean, if this is what's recommended by our bonding attorney, then I don't have any qualms with going against that. I just, we have got to keep this thing moving.
Well, I understand that, but this isn't an authority meeting, this is a board of supervisors meeting, and our attorney here has an opinion as well.
Understood.
Well, Rocky, and I don't know if you've seen the email from the authority attorney as far as his explanation for the legal authority, it's not, he doesn't say that it's a slam dunk that it can be done in this way. I'll just put it that way, so.
Although, I mean, after all our discussion, I'm almost willing to try something new and do it. I don't know, it seems like we're jumping through hoops, you know, I'm gonna, we're going to loan the authority this money, the authority, once they get money, they're going to pay us back, and then we're going to pay them back the money they just paid us back over 20 years. But, you know, in legal terms, it seems like maybe it's the best way to do it, because essentially Larry is working for the authority, he's billing the authority. I mean, unless we had like a 2080 where we pay the bill, and then it doesn't, I don't, you know, it just seems like maybe this, the 2080, the way it's written, is probably the best way to go, I don't know.
But there has been overlap. You mentioned, Larry, there has been overlap. It's not completely cut and dry. Do I think that we would be sued for this? Probably not, just to pay a contractor or an architect, but, I mean, I just have a problem putting my name to something that I know is not an enumerated power, I know it's not strictly legal, I just, that's just a bridge too far for me. I mean, it's clear, it does not have home rule, it does not say it can do it, you can't do it. But we need to get, anything we can do to get this resolved is something we will do in the next week. Again, the trade-off being, the bond issue passed, and we're going to have a jail, so, it's something that should have been comprehended in the, in a previous step, but this is all new to a lot of us, so.
Is the 2080 the fastest way to get this gentleman paid?
Not necessarily. As we said, if we, if we put it through the claims next week, it would be next week. 2080, I mean, you'd have-
We'd have to transfer them the money, and then they'd have to pay them, so I don't know.
Yeah, there'd be a two-step process instead of one step, but I don't know how long that would take, per se, but it'd be about the same amount of time.
You know, I don't see any hurt in waiting a week to figure out the best way to pay the bill as far as legally.
Yeah.
Will they buy the checks in the mail for one more week? Will they what? Will they buy the checks in the mail for one more week?
Well, we can submit the claims next week.
Yeah.
To be approved and paid next week.
Right.
Through the county, via our general basic.
Although, the only-
Joshua can research a little bit more on this.
If we come back next week and this is the best way to do it, then it just takes a week longer-
Yeah.
-from this method.
I'd ask, I'd ask the vendor if they could, if it's cleanest to separate out the itemized expenses that could be attributed to the county rather than the authority. That may be enough. You don't think so?
Yeah, I mean, because 156 is on this bill. I don't, I don't think you could find 156 and say that's all the county's bill, and then the rest is, you know, none of it's the authority's. So, I think it's the authority's bill, and then we just-
All right. I'll move to remove items A and B from the agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Raddig. Any discussions? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying aye, passes 5-0. Item 10, from Secondary Roads, County Engineer Mark Nera, includes A for action, receive bids for PCC crushing 2020 and return them to the county engineer for review and recommendation.
The first is from Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Ranbeck, Iowa. Bid bond is included. I'll just read off the total, $363,840. 363840. Next is from Cap Recycling LLC. They have a certified check as the bid bond. Total bid price, $194,900. 194900. I'm assuming this is a bid for PCC crushing, I'm not familiar with the company, but let me check. This is a different item of information, so I'll set it aside. And the final is from Schmellin Construction of Marcus, Iowa. Total bid price, $177,654. I recommend that the board receive the bids and return them to my office for review.
I'll move that recommendation.
I'll second the motion by Raddig. Any comments?
The bid's very close between those two low ones, and we need to make sure they haven't made any errors in the computation.
Very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying aye, passes 5-0. There's no action on item B, given the previous motion. Item C is to receive bids for pavement markings 2020 and return them to the county engineer for review and recommendation.
We only have one bid, and we'll pass around bid tabs for that. Total bid price, $171,960. I would request that the board receive the quotation and allow the county engineer to review the bid results.
I'll move that request. I'll second the motion by DeWitt, Mr. Raddig.
Yeah, what was the estimate on that one?
$124,100. I knew it was substantially under this, I'd like to take a look at what some of the state bid results are.
Who was the bidder?
The bidder, I'm sorry, I should have read that off. The bidder is Iowa Plains Signing of Slater, Iowa. In the past, we have had more competitive bids than won. It could very well be, we'll come back with a recommendation not to award. Again, I want to see what the issue is statewide.
So, don't we normally have a local bidder on that one?
Sometimes Dakota Traffic Systems bids, they haven't been very successful historically, which may be why they backed off this year. Dakota has an office here, they're not based out of here, though.
Lines and Stripes, or is that a, do they just do parking lots?
The other one that we, Lines and Stripes does not bid for the county. Our job, or the big highway rigs that are out there, rather than the, some of the smaller city rigs. We do have some of the small pavement markings and symbols that are part of this contract down at Port Neal Road and 255th Street CF intersection. We have some special logos that are part of the bid, and then we also have some stop bars to bid this year. Vogel, Diamond Vogel, usually gets our bids. Two years ago, they had their truck burn up. Last year, they, they were in the process of reconstructing it and chose not to bid, they weren't ready to go yet. This year, I have been assured they'd be ready to bid- This year, I've been assured they'd be ready to bid, but we sent them notice. We sent out requests for bids. I guess Ben didn't write down the, he didn't give me a copy of the folks that were the bid holders, but I know we sent to Diamond Vogel and Dakota Traffic as well as the only bidder we got, which was Iowa Plains Signing. There's Hawkeye out of Waterloo. There's four or five firms that do this statewide. Like I said, I don't have an explanation for why only one bid, but again, I would like to see if statewide trends are higher this year because of some issue with the paint. We bid the paint by the gallon. We were estimating $17 per gallon. They came in at 23.
That doesn't account for the percentage difference, though, in the total bid price,
Does this ever come down to quality of the material?
The material has to be the Iowa DOT spec, and most of the paint is done by Diamond Vogel. The other contractors bid against them basically for application in most years.
Okay.
The DOT specifications for latex traffic paint and glass beads are very specific. All the contractors would use that same supply or same specification, and most of them actually use the same supplier. But for whatever reason, this year, they chose not to bid.
No fire sale on that one? No fire sale on that?
There isn't, not at that price, no. So, I think last year, we had been running around $14, $15 per gallon when Diamond Vogel was bidding actively. Last year, I think we paid about 18 per gallon. So this year, seeing 23 is, is higher than anticipated.
So you still want time to review?
Yes, I want time to review. Again, I, I'm going to check with Iowa DOT Traffic Systems. They buy a lot of paint. They apply their own. So I can get some outside information on the price of paint meeting the specification and see if there is an issue with supply or material, something that we're not aware of here at this point in time.
All right.
I'm not willing to reject the bids yet, but I'm very close to that recommendation.
Any other discussion?
Did we, yeah, you moved it?
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11 from Community and Economic Development, Director David Gleiser includes A, Adoption of zoning district designation mapping amendment to the Woodbury County zoning ordinance for applicant Gail D. Weed.
Thank you, Chairman David Gleiser, Director of Community Economic Development. This is the final step in the rezone process. For Supervisor Wright or anybody else that might appreciate a little bit of background on this particular item, Ms. Gail D. Weed is requesting to rezone her parcel that is currently addressed at 2206 240th Street from Agricultural Preservation to the Agricultural Estates zoning district for future residential development use. She's also running a minor subdivision application concurrently with this action. And as the chairman stated, the zoning commission held a public hearing on June 22nd. The request is being made specifically because this parcel is located in a quarter-quarter section that already has two residences, and our county ordinance only allows two residences per quarter-quarter unless the zoning designation is changed to an appropriate one. Our future land use map in our county's general development plan does identify this area as being zoned agricultural. As such, the staff felt the Agricultural Estates zoning district was a good fit for this particular proposal because it allows for an increase in residential density and it maintains the agricultural characteristic of the neighborhood because it still allows agricultural uses. The property's not located in a floodplain, but it is in the first rank of the Luss Hills and it's adjacent to the Luss Hill scenic byway. The issue was discussed at length during the zoning commission's June 22nd public hearing. Subsequent to that public hearing, they voted three to zero to recommend approval of the rezone. And on June 30th, the Board of Supervisors held a public hearing on the request. Subsequently, the board approved the request, conducted the first reading of the ordinance to amend the zoning designation. And on July 7th, the board held a second public hearing, conducted the second public reading of the ordinance, waived the third public reading, and, excuse me, waived the third public hearing, waived the third ordinance reading, and tonight is the final action to adopt. Outside of any public comment or discussion, the staff recommendation is to adopt the zoning district designation for the applicant.
Any questions? I take it this is not the item the caller on the line is calling in about? All right, hearing no discussion?
Yes, sir.
Sir on the phone, would you like to speak on this item or a different item?
Different items, sir.
Thank you.
I'll move to adopt the zoning district designation.
Thank you very much. I will second your motion, Mr. DeWitt. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is adoption of zoning district designation mapping amendment to the Woodbury County zoning ordinance for applicant Brian D. Peterson.
Same, same step in process as the last item. I would just note that Chad Swanger is the applicant of the Terry V. Swanger Air Vocable Trust, and this is for lots one through five in the Jan subdivision, which is part of government lot one of Section Two in the Woodbury Township. And this request is to change the zoning designation from agricultural preservation to general commercial. This application is not being submitted with a minor subdivision, but the applicant does intend to do so in the future once professional services can be rendered. And a portion of this project area on parcel 88470220002 is located in the floodplain.
David, we're wondering if we're skipping.
Did you say general commercial? Change to general commercial?
Yes.
Are we skipping?
You mentioned Swanger. You skipped item C, 11C. 11V was Brian Peterson. C, you mentioned Chad Swanger.
I apologize. Same motion, same process, different application. The applicant, Brian Peterson, is requesting to change zoning designation from agricultural preservation to agricultural estates. Same as Ms. Weed, the request is being made because two residences already exist within that quarter-quarter. The future land use map for Woodbury County showed this as being identified for a suburb, rural residential, which is equivalent to our current suburban residential zoning district, which is essentially like a municipal zoning district. It's for a much higher population density. During the stakeholder review process, we identified, in coordination with Iowa Department of Natural Resources and FEMA, that the majority of the project area will likely be brought into the future floodplain map once they're revised within the next 12 to 18 months. A lot of consideration was given to that factor of, of the floodplain. And outside of that, the zoning commission held a public hearing. They discussed the matter at length. The zoning commission did recommend approval. They voted three to zero. On June 30th, the board held the first public hearing, held, excuse me, motion to approve the request, held the first ordinance reading on, excuse me, July 7th, excuse me, June 30th, the board, July 7th, the board held its second public hearing, conducted the second reading of the ordinance, waived the third public hearing, waived the third ordinance reading. Tonight's the final adoption step.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Any discussion?
I'm Gary Walters. I live at 5504 Wild Rose Lane, and I own the property adjacent to this parcel to the west. I wasn't at last week's meeting, but I was at the meeting two weeks ago, and I was also at the, attended the zoning hearing by phone. And I guess I'd like to point out several details that seem to keep getting overlooked. The zoning commission agreed three to zero to push this thing forward to this board. But within that approval, they recommended an interior road and construction of any permanent improvements to be one foot above BFE, which is this flood base, flood elevation level, which is a whole nother topic. So I don't know where that recommendation falls in your thinking or in your approving this, but that's, you know, one big question that I have. The other big question is, what, where is the base flood elevation on this property? I've provided much evidence to the board of high water marks out there that just happened as recently as last year, and that's not the first time. So, but I am not knowledgeable enough, and I guess I would ask the Peterson family or Mark if he knows, or Joshua if he knows, what is the base flood elevation at this site? Because if it's three feet up the walnut trees and then they have to build a foot above that, I personally know that it'll never happen because it's just going to be unfeasible. If it's two feet below the current soil line along the walnut trees and people just have to be a foot above it, there's going to be a lot of disappointed home buyers. So I guess my one question to this board is, do you know what the base flood elevation is in relation to that property and how it will affect this subdivision? Anybody know? Is it going to be a requirement based on the recommendation of the zoning commission of you guys to put a deed restriction on this property to make sure properties or improvements are built one foot above that level? Joshua, maybe you can answer these.
When you do a building permit, aren't you required in the community development office?
Yes. If a property is located in the floodplain, a floodplain development permit would be required, applicant would be required to obtain the base flood elevation through the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. We don't, we don't, we don't provide that information. We have the capability. But DNR provides that base flood elevation data. And I would say that this particular action item is for the rezone. It's not for the minor subdivision application, which the zoning commission's recommending, which Mr. Walters is talking about. They're very much interrelated, but I guess I would just make note that this item is requesting the zoning district designation, and like I said.
Item E is where this discussion takes place?
Yes, and I guess I would just make note that the zoning designation in the future land use map showed a higher population density than what we are recommending. With the suburban residential or rural residential zoning district, you could get up to eight lots on two acres. The staff recommendation and is, is for the agricultural estates, which would reduce that, that residential density to one house per two acres. So I guess I would say that in relation to the issues or the factors of potential risk for flooding, I feel this mitigates that by lowering the population density. No one, I guess, and I would say no one's contesting the, the action of changing the zoning designation, the items that Mr. Walters is referring to is on the subdivision plot.
Yeah, so can we go ahead with this procedural item and return?
Yeah, I'm just confused about the whole process.
No, it's okay. I know. We all, yeah.
I don't want this detail to be missed.
Yeah, it won't be. Yeah.
And then on the previous, the Weed property, must be like one of the only ones in Grange that's not in the floodplain, like almost the whole thing is in the, there's the flood map there. So Weed must be one of the only ones not in the floodplain out there. Yeah, you're, you're like right on the edge of the floodplain in there.
But the house.
Wait, wait. Yeah, you, you need to.
Yours is past. I'm just saying, you know, for.
2206 240th Street. My house right now was kind of considered in the flood area when we bought it a long time ago. But the house that I'm trying to build is off, and it's not on the hill, and it's not down below the hill. It's kind of in the middle of the hill. So as far as I know.
Okay, you're probably like right on the edge.
It's never been flooded down there since I've been down there for 30 years, so.
Right.
But I don't know how you guys consider. That's what I was wondering.
I was just looking at the FEMA maps and, you know, if you look at Woodbury County, there's a lot of blue on it. It's, you know, probably 20% of our county is blue.
I know across the, kind of like the dirt road, they, I think they still consider that kind of the flood area because of the creek there. But as far as I know, it's never flooded to.
I'm just questioning the, the information.
Yeah, I don't know where you're, you know, when you give it up.
No problem.
That's the process. Back on item B, I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. This is for something we've, a step we've taken the last couple of weeks, simply to change the designation. Any discussion on this? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item C is adoption of the same for applicant Chad Swanger.
With Mr. Swanger, I'd like to note that, again, this project area is within lots one through five in the Jan subdivision, part of government lot one of Section Two in the Woodbury Township. It's about a mile east of Sioux City on Highway 20.
What was the address on it?
It's not addressed. Do you want some parcel, I can give you some parcel numbers or?
Partially, yeah. I'll go for it.
88470220002 is one of the parcels, one of the five parcels.
I got it. Thank you.
Yep. This particular request is being made by the applicant sort of on behalf of his father's request, who had recently passed away. Some time ago, when the zoning maps were changed along Highway 20, this particular project area used to be zoned general industrial. The applicant is requesting, had requested a general industrial zoning classification, but our future land use map showed it as being identified as general commercial. So not wanting to increase the intensity of that particular zoning designation and recognizing that the fact that there are residential homes within that neighborhood, staff recommendation was to recommend a general commercial zoning designation. The applicant was agreeable to it, and in addition, it was, decided that the applicant would enter into a recorded paving agreement in compliance with the terms of the county's paving policy. Zoning commission to recommend approval of this rezone with that condition, also that the applicant comply with any and all easements and implement efforts, including building and site design, landscaping and screening to minimize any adverse effects of future land use or development. We do have an executed paving agreement, and outside of any public comment or discussion, the staff recommendation is to move to adopt the zoning designation.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Any discussion or questions from the caller on the phone?
I'm just waiting for your vote, gentlemen. That's all.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item D is approval of the final plat for the Terry addition, minor subdivision.
This is Ms. Weed's subdivision application, she's proposing an 8.8, excuse me, 8.98 acre subdivision for future residential purposes and the construction of a new house. As I mentioned earlier, it's being presented with a zoning ordinance map amendment, which was just approved. And the property is greater than two miles from any incorporated area, so it does not require extraterritorial review. June 22nd, the zoning commission voted to recommend approval of this minor subdivision with no conditions. Staff recommendation is to approve the Terry addition, minor subdivision plat and authorize the chairman to sign the resolution.
Questions or motions?
I will move it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item E is approval of the final plat for the Walnut View Minor Subdivision.
Brian Peterson, owner of parcels 8846-303-000012, parcel 8846-303-00004, and parcel 8846-303-00006, all within the Floyd Township, is proposing a 13 lot and one outlot minor subdivision for future residential purposes. This was just being held concurrently with the rezone request, which was just approved. And essentially, the, the issue with this area or this request is that, as was just mentioned, a portion of this isn't currently in the flood map. The majority of it will likely be brought in the next 18 months when those flood maps are revised. During the stakeholder review process, we reached out to numerous stakeholders and received their written comment. The zoning commission did vote to recommend approval of the plat with the condition that the lots be serviced by an internal road or cul-de-sac and that those deed restrictions be placed on all lots that would require any structure to be built on the property required to elevate a foot above the base flood elevation as determined by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and also in accordance with the county's flood plain I guess, folks, we've discussed this at length. The applicants have met with zoning staff for, I would say, probably 18 months is when the first preliminary discussions began. The issue of an internal road for access to these lots was discussed. At the time, the applicant was not agreeable to that. Therefore, the plat that you have before you was presented based on the information that we had at that time. During the zoning commission's review, they held a public hearing and their recommendation was to include that internal road, which is in conflict with what the applicant is agreeable to. So before you, the decision is essentially access to the lots and the condition that the zoning commission recommendation on the base flood elevation. I would note that the applicant has made a revision to their plat, which I can provide the board with. It is not in its final form, but I guess what it does provide is a visual access of the new lots that they're proposing with the county engineer's recommendation.
Would you explain the two acre conversation we were just in the middle of?
Correct. Yes. So our future land use map showed this neighborhood or this particular piece of land as zoned as a rural residential, which is equivalent to our current day suburban residential, and these are like 10,000 square foot lots. And so if we would follow the county's future land use map with a higher zoning or higher residential zoning designation, the likelihood of flood risk would increase, and so that's why the staff recommendation was for the agricultural estates, because it would allow for more than two houses within that quarter quarter. It still maintains the agricultural integrity of the neighborhood because it allows agricultural uses and it re, it mitigates the risk for increased property damage because it'd be less property out there.
So more groundwork to ensure that foundations and everything is-
So there's some elevation issues there currently. If you drove past this on the road right now, there's portions of the land that are not level with the road. To Mr. Walters' question about the base flood elevation, it would be likely above the ground. And I would say that there will be some, in some locations, I would say significant dirt work that would be required. But there's nothing within our flood plain regulations that would prohibit us from permitting structures if it was in the flood plain.
So, sorry, okay, out of curiosity, do we allow in, in the state of Iowa for people to build up like concrete piers?
Yes.
So like essentially a house on stilts with the parking underneath, those kind of-
They could.
Designs are allowed, okay?
Numerous architectural design strategies to elevate a structure, yes.
Okay, I just didn't know if we had any restrictions against those here. It's just no one ever does and there's some, I mean, almost all of Crescent Park, that entire area is like a flood plain. And, I mean, we, we build all over in, in flood plains in Sioux City and Woodbury County and, you know, I know things have changed where we, you know, FEMA's trying to keep that down because they don't, you know, it seems like they changed both ways. You know, they, they try to add more houses into flood plains so they get more people paying flood insurance, but at the same time, they're not allowing new construction in areas that are known to flood. So obviously, you know, it's not, the onus is not on us as to whether or not somebody builds a certain way, it's just in order for them to get a permit, they do have to address the issues.
Correct. And that was really one of the primary concerns, I believe, that the zoning commission had is that they wanted to make sure that anybody who bought a piece of ground there was aware of the risk for flooding potential. And because it's currently not in the flood plain, they wanted to put a restrictive covenant on plat and deed restriction that would follow the property for the life of it.
Well, that's, that's really unheard of, though.
It's a little unique, yes. And it was something that was recommended from Iowa DNR as a means to sort of regulate the, the interim time from now until when the flood maps are published.
Is that in the current plat, it's up for approval?
I'm sorry?
That particular regulation, are we voting to approve on that tonight?
This action is to vote to approve the plat.
Correct, but to the issue of water level, the concern for water level, is, is there a regulation built in to the, the current version of the plat that we're about to go on?
There would need to be-
Because you said it was a part of, you said it was a part of the zoning commission's recommendation, is that in, is that built into the plat as we're reading it tonight?
So my name's Dan Peterson with the development. And yes, the current version of the plat that was just handed to you, it has the, the verbiage actually says, "All structures required to elevate one foot above base flood elevations as determined by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources in accordance with Woodbury County's flood plain regulations." So while it's not currently in the flood plain and our personal feeling is that the requirement is part of the building permit process, given the concern that we said that everyone had and the fluctuation of the new FEMA maps, they had to draft out three weeks ago, in the last week, they changed it and actually pulled some of that back, I think on like July 2nd or 3rd, they published another version. So in the next 18 months, who knows what that version's going to look like. So we're saying, like anywhere, you, to get your building permit, you would have to be one foot above that base flood elevation, so we put it on the plat.
And you're agreeable with that?
It, it is, even though we don't necessarily think that's, needs to be on the deed, but we did put it on there. The other thing we added based on the discussions we've had on this internal roadway, which was the recommendation from them, what, what I did in the map that you guys have, I, I drew on there where shared driveway locations would be between a couple of lots and then there's a green circle on it that shows, go ahead.
Is there, I mean, is there a reason why there's four of the same or is the three for our friends, like we give?
I-
These have four of the same exact piece of paper.
You must have got multiple copies of it then, so.
That's what I was looking at, I'm looking at the same page.
I wanted to make sure you looked at every map, no, no.
Is this continue on down the road?
There's one map.
One map, okay. So we have eight copies.
Okay, there's eight, eight pages of the same thing we have right here.
If you want it, it's down the road someday, maybe.
Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
That's all right.
And what that is, is that's, that's a compromise between the original plan and, and the county and your employee that says, yes, he would, he would be acceptable to a, to share driveways on, so that he would be adding five more to the total set on that road.
Sir, can you state your names on the record?
I'm Brad Peterson. So what I, what I would like to say, and I'll kind of take your place, Dave, sorry. The, the plat submitted in front of you has a recommendation or has a requirement for one foot above the base flood elevation. It has the driveway access restrictions on the plat, there's a paragraph, that's what this, the second paragraph shows. That's, it's a blown up piece because the plat is so small, I, so you guys can see it, it shows lot two and three has to be a require, has to be a shared driveway, lot four and five has to be a shared driveway. So that was our compromise to, to you guys to say, here's something that you can approve. There's two existing driveways, we need seven total, so it's only adding five driveways in a one mile stretch. For your benefit a little bit, last week, we talked about driveways and access on 141. We're going to end up with a total of 10 driveways within a one mile location here.
I've been out to take a look three times.
Have you been, okay, further down the road, it's-
I've been working to educate myself on this.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Is that going to be the decider tonight?
Very good. Further down the road, it was 10, there were actually 14 driveways in a one mile stretch. A little bit further is 10 in a one mile stretch, which is equivalent to what we're going to have to the west, there's 32 driveways in a one mile stretch. So we tried to address those concerns. The one thing, it's, we're trying to do this and have a development which will create tax base for the county and we're not asking the county for any money, any dollars towards our project, we're not asking for TIF money. So I think that, you know, I thought we brought something in front of you that will work, some compromises to get us there, hopefully we can meet everybody's objectives. So thank you for your consideration.
I appreciate the Petersons' effort in their counting driveways for 10 mile stretches at a time. However, today, I counted some driveways myself. And from Portland Avenue, which is on 141 just before you get to Memorial Park Cemetery, so it's pretty much right there at 141, from Portland Avenue to 210th Street is a five mile stretch. There are 19 driveways that serve homes. There are 44 driveways total. So I appreciate their effort to tell you how many driveways there are, but you have to understand that, that the seven they're adding and a half a mile are going to serve homes that are going to have at least two cars, if not more, whereas all the, so if you take those 19 driveways serving homes in five miles, it's 3.8 driveways per mile. They did a 10 mile study and they showed 6.3 driveways per mile, but I can guarantee you that two thirds of those are farm driveways that rarely see use. So I'm circling back to the safety issue on 141 and the, the idea that there should be an internal road and that is that you, you can't count driveways on 210th Street or 220th Street in a certain segment, those streets are all flat, their elevation of the lots come flat out to the street. This is completely different, these lots are 10, 12, 15 feet below the road bed. The road bed isn't going to change, people have to build up. And I know they can do that, but I, I'm just, I'm trying to point out to you all the truths that you need to know. And the truth is, three or four driveways in a mile is plenty to serve homes and don't count all the driveways that probably 10% of them are vacant, never get used, including one on this property that's right in the middle of the walnut trees, I've never seen a soul drive in that driveway. So I guess, do you have any other questions of me? You know, I'm, I'm obviously opposed for safety and for water. Keith and I have had some great bantering back and forth, you know, it's not just the home that's in peril here. People have to have a well, that's got to be built up, they've got, that well has got to be 100 feet from their septic system. You know, they've got some, that's why they're not packing them in down there, because you got to have a drain field and to have a drain field, you've got to have space. And, you know, Keith said, well, during the five days when it floods every other year, have Jackson come out and pump it. Well, guess what, Jackson won't even be able to get there because the road will be underwater. So, you know, you've got to consider the septic system, you've got to consider the people on the road, there's 1,400 cars on that road every day. There's just too many strikes against this for me to be positive about it.
Do you think- What I was saying on the septic, though, is that you don't have to have a full on leach field, drain field, design, septic system, they can build tanks just to hold and then have it pumped out. And I'll give you like the campground in Sausue, they use essentially a tank system in one area where it can hold things and of course, it floods there all the time. So that's a way to contain and of course, pump out when need be.
Thing is, is the thing is going to be based on evaporation and soaking away and nobody's going to put a gun to anybody's head, Keith, and say, make sure you have a 10 day storage there when you're underwater. It's just not going to be part of the plan.
It doesn't, and telling, telling these guys they can't do something because of, you know, where they're at and, you know, in-
Well, a lot of people are told they can't do something because of where they're at. You can't build, put a drain field and granite.
The rest of the county hasn't been. So almost all of the Grange Township is, is blue, it's the flood plain. Yet there's people that live there and they all have septics and they all have wells.
Right.
So they figure it out a way to do it, so can the people that move here, just right next to where you live, the Fleet Farm gas station, right? That's in the flood plain. But what did, they, they raised it up, they built it up.
Right.
And all those new developments right along there on Sunnyburg Drive, those are all in the flood plain. And-
I know, you can do anything, contractors are amazing people.
Exactly.
I get it. But I, I'm just saying, I want to make sure the restrictions and, and the recommendations are, are carefully considered in the vote here because, you know, I've been told that, that for instance, the developer, when the train wreck happens, it's going to happen in the next five years, I can stand here and guarantee it, it will happen. Where are the poor citizens going to come? Are they either going to come to you because you approved it and you're going to say, you know, the Petersons developed this, they thought it was a good idea and we agreed. Who are they going to sue? Who, who, who are they going to go after damages for, Keith? Maybe it's a question for Josh, but the, the point is, is you have all this information in front of you of the hazards of this. So just make sure if you do vote for it, that you put the restrictions in there so the buyer doesn't have to be caught blindsided because you guys have the knowledge, nobody should get cheated out of misinformation here.
Well, and I think they've been pretty agreeable to almost everything except for one-
Internal road.
Yeah, and I, I totally understand that.
And I think the project will die on the vine because people won't want to share driveways, but I don't care if it dies on the vine for that reason and, and that's fine, but just make sure that people are aware of all the hazards by the restrictive covenants.
And I don't make as much as like Dennis Butler, but he might go out there and buy like three lots and build a new mansion, I don't know, you know. But it's up to, you know, that's up to the market to decide, you know. Or Josh, is he saying Josh is looking? No, I-
I think Josh grew up in, in that kind of ground, I, I, I'm going to be surprised if I see Josh building there, but aye.
We were dug some of those shovels first.
And if, and if one of you would address in particular the restriction or guarantee of being above a certain level, just again, in what you're asking to be approved.
Again, I'm Dan Peterson. Respectfully, Gary, if you'd have been here last weekend, you would have heard that I had field driveways and farmhouse driveways separated, and I have account for both of those two, and I can show it to you, so. Anyway, the...
Moral of the story is make every single board meeting, don't miss any of them.
You miss a lot of information.
Right.
So, to, to review, our, our request is, we put a plat in front of you that had, does not have a shared driveway, which was the recommendation of the zoning commission, which we do not agree with. We did make the concession to say, we, we would have some shared driveways, and those, that, those recommendations on the shared driveways is based off of Mark's, Mark Nara, the county engineer's, information where he had evaluated, we had it staked, he went out and evaluated line of sight, and he recommended two and three to be shared, four and five to be shared, the list is on there. So we had that language from those, from those requests, and put on the face of the plat. And then we also considered the base flood elevation comments, and we put it on the plat saying that you are not allowed to build anything unless it's one foot above the base flood elevation. So our request to you is the plat that's in front of you, which shows the layout of the lots, it has, and I have a copy of the full plat, this was a blown up one so you could see the, the portion of it. It has a box for the FEMA portion related to the flood elevation, it has a box for, clearly stating that, that which shared driveways there are. Any other questions on it?
I have a question for Mr. Glazer, if you're, if you're done.
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
As this is sitting in front of us today, is there anything within the county zoning board, county ordinance, county resolution, anything that should prohibit us from, from approving this today? Is there anything that they are not doing that has not been addressed, looked at, or otherwise? Because I'm sitting with, I mean, I don't care where you build, you've gotta have a certain amount of caveat emptor, you know, you have to know what you're getting into and/or your contractor, I mean, yeah, we can blame all kinds of people, but my, my question is, are the Petersons doing anything that is illegal or ill-advised, or is there anything in front of us today that should stop us from approving this plat?
I would say no.
Okay.
As, as folks have, you know, addressed, there are some impediments to the site, and during our stakeholder review process, all of the impediments were addressed. We have, you know, written recommendations from professionals on each of these issues. And as those impediments were addressed, we have recommendations to address those issues. And I would say that I would take Mr. Walter's feedback into great consideration. I feel that the zoning commission has the best interests of the public safety at heart with their recommendation. And I would also say that the, the board, you, the board of supervisors ultimately have discretion to accept or reject those recommendations from, from the zoning commission, as well as any other outside recommendations from the applicant or from the public. So you do have that discretion to impose those deed restrictions or not, but I do feel that the plat in front of you is one in a form that you can vote and approve, so...
Does anyone opposed, disagree with the statement that restrictions of being one foot above the base flood elevation satisfies that obstacle?
And I don't know the, I don't know the answer to that, Matthew. That's why I wanna know what it is. Put a stake out there and tell me what it is, because I know in layman's terms how high I've seen the water.
Okay.
And so I, that's why I wanted to just, want somebody to tell me what...
The gentleman behind you's gonna answer that. He raised his hand.
All right. So, right now, the way the law is stated right now, it's like, there's only a half of one, there's only half of, of one lot that is actually in the flood zone, and, so what, what did, what did you wanna, what the base elevation flood zone is? So...
What the BFE is right now?
It doesn't matter what it is.
That's determined by the DNR.
If the determination is made, and that's what it is. But they even, they even changed what the new determination is gonna be last week.
So it would be whatever it is before someone starts work?
Yeah.
Would be answered in the building permit and permitting process?
Yes, and I would, I would say that the Iowa DNR uses the best data available to, to come up with that base flood elevation, and it's probably gonna be different at different locations, you know, throughout the county, but the base flood elevation here is, could be different from what it is over here.
And they'll, and someone will advise them that just because it's this amount, hey, here are pictures of it flooding in the past, you may wanna do something safer.
If they're required to elevate above the base flood elevation, we would also obtain an elevation certificate upon completion of construction.
What, what the process would be is, they would have to call the Department of Natural Resources and of course this. And in a half a mile run, the base flood elevation can vary by even up to half a foot, depending on the gradient of the stream. So, once it's known which lot, let's say they're developing lot two, that data can be given to the officials at DNR who determine base flood elevation. The owner of the lot will then have to hire a land surveyor to determine where that elevation is on his lot, and assure that he is one foot above that elevation. If that lot turns out to be within the floodplain, they get what's called a letter of map amendment, which amends the flood map, and would show them that that foundation is at least that one foot above. It's, it's a process that they have to build into their building application, it's an expense for that individual to have that determination done by a land surveyor. But once it's done, it would establish the elevation for that area. Now you can do this on a whole subdivision, determine what that elevation is, and set a monument in advance, or it can be done individually, lot by lot. We had a lot of buildings, or a lot of building lots do this when the last flood maps were published in 2011, because it then determined whether or not those people had to purchase flood insurance. So DNR provided the elevation, land surveyor came out, determined where that elevation was on the lot, and then determined that low occupied foundation area to determine whether or not it was one foot above base flood elevation, so that that individual could either get insurance or have to pay for higher risk insurance.
And my question to conclude that, that your willingness to meet that standard, to build above one foot, you're agreeing to take on some substantial costs to get this project done already, just to, just to meet that?
Well, they're not necessarily the developer, they're just...
It would be the land...
It would be the lot purchaser would have to take it on.
Okay, whoever buys it.
And they would have to build that into their negotiations on the price. I mean, there are septic systems that are designed to work in areas where you have a wet soil. You may have seen them in some areas, we have a few in this county, I've seen a lot of them down in the floodplains where it's a sand filter, you're basically building a hump of sand that allows that material, or you know, the, the water to percolate down into and about the soil. You end up building your, your septic field above that wedded perimeter elevation. Again, there are designs, and that would be, you know, instead of a $10,000 septic system, these people may have to build a $25,000 septic system to make it work in that area. But again, that's a choice that that buyer will make. What is happening with the subdivision is, here's a lot, this is what I want for it. They have to make the determination of the value of that lot when they purchase.
Thank you. The question was addressed to Mr. Peterson, was the answer yes, or did you wanna expound, or are you good?
A question on the expense of it?
Yeah, as to whether you're undertaking a special cost to make sure that these restrictions are met.
Well, so, my understanding is that by putting them on the plat, everyone that buys a lot is gonna be aware of their restriction is they have to be one foot above base...
Essentially passing it on to, making sure that cost gets passed on.
Now, that, in lieu of us going and making that determination, like you said, for the entire development, and then coming and spending the money to go do that, and then you guys saying, oh, well, we don't wanna do it, we don't wanna have this in our county, why would you go do that ahead of time? So, one, I mean, whether we have individuals in each lot goes and does it, or, you know, to make them more sellable, or to continue to develop more value to them, we may spend that money, determine what the base flood elevation is, so we can hand it to them on a platter and say. Now whether we do that, or whether we sell the lot and say, well, it's a ground as is, it's zoned, here it is, you go determine it for each one, you know, that's to be determined.
So, it was a, it was a pretty big concession for us to put that on there, because it actually added an expense to every lot. And once it's a portion of the plat, that actually, that actually was quite a big concession on our part for that, because that might be a $3,000 to $5,000 thing per lot to do that. And so, and the other thing is it causes more difficulty for the person that's gonna get a mortgage to build out, because he has to meet that criteria. And so, don't take that, the sentence that's in your plat, it's the second, the second sentence down on the right side of the plat, don't, don't take that lightly, that's a, that's a $5,000 per, per lot expense that just got incurred for every lot there to, to meet, to meet this criteria. Which by the way, right now, the floodplain right now only had, there is only half of one lot that is in the floodplains. Some of the lots on, on the northwest corner, actually, we actually have a, have a builder that wants to build walkout basements, it's not all, you can't see it on the map, but it's not all flat. And so, you know, we, we try to do what is the right thing for the buyer, and the right thing to meet your requirements, and still make it so that we have a sellable lot that somebody can build a house on there. There is quite a demand for people that wanna build a house, for the same reason that you want all the land out there, there's other people that wanna own land. And so we are not asking for you to change the rules, we're actually trying to hear all the rules that you guys, or not that, that you're, that the county and the county employees have come up with, and we are trying to bring this to you, and we're not trying to, to do anything wrong here, this could be some really nice lots for someone. There is quite, we have, we have people that wanted to buy lots for there before, they, they just seen the plat from, from the meeting from two weeks ago, and they wanna buy lots. And so, if, if it wasn't the right thing to do, people wouldn't want to do it. And so we're not trying to do the wrong thing, and we're trying to bring a good program to this piece of ground. Well, thank you.
Mr. Gregg Truckey.
Greg Truckey, 1953, Old Iowa 141. I've been listening to discussion here, and I'm perplexed about a couple things. I've, I've lived on that road for 28 years, I've spent 45 years in the construction industry. So I understand elevations and all this stuff, but they're asking you to approve a plat on, with unknowns. How can you guys approve a plat when you don't know the BFE, you don't know all the potential problems with this? You're gonna say, okay, it's okay to build on there, but we'll fix all these problems later. I think that's putting the cart before the horse. I don't think this board should be able to approve, or should approve, this plat without knowing all of the pitfalls to it. I mean, you're gonna approve this thing, and when this BFE number comes in, or elevation, nobody knows where that is, that could be, I mean, the thing could die on the vine from that, but let's, let's not put the cart before the horse, let's have them come to you with proper elevation, so you know what you're voting on. And, you know, let's get this thing done right, so the, the potential buyers are not out there dealing with all kinds of dirt have to be brought in there. It, it just, it looks like this thing is trying to be pushed through and will fix these problems later. Well, I listened to a discussion earlier in this meeting about the law enforcement center, and all the issues, and some issues with grading and all this. Well, they go through great detail to know that, shouldn't the same standard be applied to this lot? I'm just saying, slow this thing down, have the correct information in front of you before you decide to go ahead with it. Thank you.
And kind of in a response to that, Greg, we never have base flood elevations discussed on any of the final plots ever voted on. It's, it's really always up to the developer or the buyer that determines that, you know, how they're gonna build, what they're gonna build. All we're really doing is approving the right to change this to a residential ag estates area, which is so much house density per quarter, quarter.
Sure.
And, you know, really, the only contention on it is, you know, do we require them to build a, a street to serve it that, in the future the county's gonna have to maintain? Or are we gonna let them just share driveways? Or are we gonna let them all have their own driveways? Well, they've conceded to sharing driveways, which I think is a concession.
Well, I, I prefer no driveways. I mean, I drive that road every day, I'm sure, you know, and it's, it's gonna be an issue, but, you know, I guess...
Well, and, you know, you compare this to other projects, like the City of Sioux City project I brought up earlier where Fleet Farm is. You know, not only did they approve a plat there, not discussing any of the base flood elevation, but the city even gave money towards that project. They haven't asked us for a dime on this development, and it's gonna bring taxes down for everyone once it's built.
Okay, so, that being said, then when in this discussion, in this process, do all these things come into play?
So when people go and get their building permits and go through the permitting process, they have to discover that. Now, we're not...
So, you're gonna approve a development that you know has flaws and deficiencies?
We're, we're approving a plat.
That you know has flaws and deficiencies?
No, we don't.
That you do know.
No, you don't.
You've been told this by people, that it's gonna come into a flood zone in 18 months.
I can show you a map of Woodbury County, you tell me all the houses in, in the floodplain, should we go out and tear them all down?
I'm not saying that.
It doesn't, just because it's a floodplain doesn't mean it's a deficient place to build. That's an inaccurate statement. That's not deficient. There are solutions to every problem when it comes to building.
But, who's response, who's, who's the responsibility of correcting these deficiencies gonna come? Let me give you an example of why I have a big concern over this.
Sir, if you could allow him to answer the question?
Sure.
Or make a statement, and it's just, you know...
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, I don't care.
Okay. I'm just saying, this could turn into something like what happened at Elk Creek Road and Glen Allen Road, where the county had to buy three houses because the people in those houses were concerned that the dam was gonna break, and they were gonna be flooded. So the county had to buy at, you know, market value or above the houses, auction them off for a loss, and the taxpayers had to foot the bill on moving those houses, or, you know, returning that back to, to whatever kind of use it was. So we all had to pay for that because someone in this county board, or someone in this county approved building those houses there. Is that very same thing gonna happen down here? Can anybody answer that? And if you can't, how can you go ahead and say, well, it's okay to build there?
As long as they're building within the restrictions and guidelines that are put forth by the Iowa DNR permitting process, you, you can't...
The, the process appears to be, let's do the plat, and it's almost like a bait and switch. Let's get it in there, get it approved to build, and it's the homeowner's problem once they buy it.
I can't guarantee you that this is gonna be 11 lots once it's built. This guy might buy five, this guy might buy one of each.
I find that unlikely, but, okay.
Well, you know, you know, it's, it's a market decision. We don't determine that, that's up to the market. And if they already have a developer or builder interested in a few, and he plans to do walkout basements, you know, that are gonna have a pretty nice view of a backyard that's gonna be pretty big, might flood, have a little pond or something.
So you feel confident that with any flooding issues, we'll never come back and haunt the county?
The county is not responsible. If somebody decides to somehow sneak a building out there without going through the permitting process, that's on them. But if they go through the permitting process, and they get a, a permit from the DNR that says they're above the base flood elevation, they pass. Well then at that point, isn't it an act of God if it's above the floodplain?
Okay, sure, but wasn't the same criteria applied to the Glen... Okay, sure, but wasn't the same criteria applied to the Glen Allen and Elk Creek Road homes?
I couldn't tell you because that's-
I would assume they would have been. So, I'm just saying, it looks like there's a lot of problems potential on this thing, and it's trying to be pushed through without them properly being addressed.
Well, and I'm going to disagree with you on that because, like you said, they came to them 18 months ago. They worked with Community Economic Development. They worked with the engineer, came to a compromise, had a plan, went to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning went on a more stringent route. And we, as a Board of Supervisors, we can go with the recommendations of our staff. We can disregard what everybody says and do whatever we want on this. But at the same time, they've still conceded quite a bit, and all they're asking is just let us have a few driveways.
Conceding, don't take it out of the flood plain, you know. And we can argue this all day. I just wanted to share what I have to share.
I mean, I could probably look up your address. You might be in the flood plain. You don't even know.
I think I might be, but if I flood-
Do you want us to tear your house down and take it from you? I mean-
If I flood, everybody's drunk, so.
Right.
I'd like to make sure the caller on the phone, if they wanted to speak, they had their couple minutes. They left?
They were for the other-
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to hear our vote. He said on that other one.
Is there any new information on the actual plat? Do supervisors Potomac or DeWitt have any wise words for us all?
Well, Mr. Glazer answered my question. There, I mean, alluding to the discussions of Mr. Walters and Mr. Truckee, I mean, like I said, I asked if there's any item that's not addressed to legally prevent us from approving this plat. And I was told, no, going through the building permit process and all the other issues. I owned a house on the edge of a lot and that was on the edge of the flood plain. But, I mean, as I understand it, flood plain changes every X amount of years, so I don't know. I mean, they build homes in Dakota Dunes. Would I build a home out there? Absolutely not. But obviously, it's out of my district, so I'm not going to start that argument again. But I don't see anything holding me or the rest of the board from preventing this plat to go through. So I'm leaning in, I'm going to vote to approve it.
And I will tell you, I'm still where I was before. The zoning commission said with the road. And my wife and I spent half the day Sunday. I think she got tired of me turning around, going back by it again. And I did try to turn around on one of those old driveways and almost didn't get out of there. So, I'm just going to, just to cut the conversation short, you know where I stand on the public safety, and that's where I'm at.
And I'll just say, the flood plains do change. That's a moving target, obviously. The restriction being above that satisfies that, in my mind. I'll, as I said before, err on the side of marketplace decisions and personal responsibility. Is the area in general going to flood in the future? Yes. Are the houses going to be safe if they build at the right time and decide on the right elevation? I would say yes. People have to both abide by the permitting process and hopefully look at the grand historical, you know, just decide if the, you know, if the risk is still there outside of the permitting requirements. And that's something that we are, that we don't make that choice. You know, no matter what we approve, we can't make that choice for people that decide to own property. Any other discussion?
I should probably apologize to these guys for suggesting they have so much more money than they go out and build there.
Well, you should probably apologize to that paint company for joking about their truck exploding.
Sorry about the fire.
That's going to take a while. Okay, I'll move approval.
Second.
Well, and I guess you should clarify, is that the approval of the plat with the driveways?
Yes, as submitted, which will be recorded in the minutes with the attachment we have. Seconds by DeWitt.
Do we have to receive that attachment?
Can you receive the attachment?
I'll move to receive.
Okay, second. Disregard the previous motion. Motion to receive by Radick, second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
I also move to receive the letter of support from the Siouxland Initiative.
Passes 5-0, and I'll second the motion by Radick to receive their letter from the Siouxland Initiative, which states they are in support of the project and endorse a win-win solution that will make this project financially feasible for the developer. Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Now I will move approval of the minor subdivision.
Second.
Second again by Mr. DeWitt. Any last words? Good luck to you guys and everyone that embarks on this exciting adventure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Passes 4-1, Potomac opposed. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
I think so.
Thank you, guys, all you guys.
Next is item 12 from the county auditor for action. This is to approve the amended advanced scheduling quote from Tyler Technologies. Deputy Auditor Michelle Scaff.
Yes, Deputy Auditor Michelle Scaff. What I have before you tonight hopefully will be a little bit easier to approve. On the 23rd, I presented to the board a quote for the Executime piece of our Tyler project. And this is a scheduling system that will be used by the Sheriff's Office, Emergency Services, Building Services, and Juvenile Detention. I found out afterwards that the quote they gave me was incorrect. The quote was based on us purchasing the software directly. However, the rest of the Tyler project, we have a subscription. So they recommended that we change this to a subscription, which will actually lower the cost by about $12,000, $12,461. There is a small increase in the annual cost because it's subscription-based versus owned by us, but the implementation cost goes down greatly. My recommendation is to approve the change in the quote.
I'll move approval.
I'll second the motion by DeWitt.
I've got about 20 questions on this.
Attach them on a separate sheet of paper, and if the meeting's adjourned, you can ask those questions.
As long as a couple of them are run on.
Okay.
Hearing no discussion, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 13, as reports on committee meetings, I'll start. I had a Siouxland District Health meeting last week. One item of note, you know, they always say something that's kind of interesting and intriguing about the coronavirus issue going on because that's the main thing they're tracking now, obviously, is that locally, they said the main source of transmission locally continues to be social gatherings of people with friends or family. So, you know, just someone comes over, you have dinner, you share things, I guess. So I hope that helps to alleviate a little bit, you know, the workplace concern and different things like that. A lot of times, we, you know, we can make decisions based on fear, and I think it's helpful to note that, you know, it's not necessarily going to work that's the highest risk. It's when you go home. Do you continue your safe practices and obviously be smart about your health? So, anyone else have any committee reports?
Just wondering on assignments?
Yes, next week, I expect to have your, give you a couple assignments. We'll revise the committee and liaison assignments. If you have any particular interest, please let me know. We do want to have the agenda draft approved by Friday morning, Thursday night. So, same for anyone else, if you're looking at making a change, although it's only halfway, we're already halfway through the year. So, don't foresee any big changes with the committee assignments. But it'd be good to get your feet in the water and perhaps double up on some of us that, you know, can have two supervisors supervising a certain department or something like that. So we'll have those out next week. Any reports on committees? Once again, any citizen concerns, item 14, no one on the phone? Any citizen concerns? Item 15 is our, we get the final word as board members. So, open up for board concerns. I want to say welcome again, Supervisor Wright. Some of us anticipated the last previous item being a tiebreaker vote. I'm sorry it wasn't. I'm sorry I didn't get to participate in a tiebreaker vote, but they'll come. They'll come. That's a promise.
I do have a board comment. I talked about it last week, about the fact that the county doesn't have any nuisance ordinance for abandoned houses and all. Out in the county, like I said, out in the middle of the county, I couldn't care less. But the house we were talking about was in Luton. And after going around and around this last development numerous times, we went down and drove past this house in Luton, and it's terrible. And I could see where it's a danger, but we have nothing to address it. So, somewhere in the future, I may start looking at trying to come up with something and see what we can come up with. I know David says he doesn't want it because he doesn't have the budget. County attorney says now we don't want to do it. But somewhere along that, I think just a general nuisance ordinance wouldn't be a bad thing to have. But we'll see.
And I think we're fortunate in terms of speed along that road. Where those driveways will begin is right after a curve that finishes the speed limit to 40 miles an hour. And some folks are going to be turning off the Bronson. So, there won't be, not every single driver will be. Hopefully, ignoring safe speeds, there are several just natural kind of decisions that people are having to make to hopefully be driving under control.
I won't say what speed I did, so.
Any other board concerns? Do we have any closed session items next week, or? Still be at 4:30 next week, all right. Hearing none, we're adjourned.
Nice short meeting, Mr. Truckee.
Anyone mention my concern of seeing Yetzgo with a fire?
I wasn't scared, come on.
That was funny.
Oh, I know, that was my call friend. I'm like, okay, relax. Yeah, that was pretty funny.
Wow.
That's nice.
Michelle, did you stop the stream? You want me to do it? No. Okay, I'll do it.